Good morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. We have some additions also. Addition, a request to hire staff detox and an update on the avian flu.
I would move with the amendments.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Employee recognition. Rob Barnburg. Rob presented a grateful recognition of 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County citizens. Thank you very much.
Did you say Seth Piper?
Right. I knew you were going to say Seth.
He's out on the road doing some instruction staking, so he wouldn't be able to.
Slave driver.
Grateful recognition, Seth, 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service. Thanks for us.
Yep.
And then for Thomas, give him our councilor. Sheriff presented a grateful recognition of 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County citizens. Thanks very much. Okay. Sheriff's Citizens Award Bill.
Thank you for giving us this time to award two of our emergency service people here in Clay County. For that, I'm going to call up Sergeant Evdean to read his.
Thank you. In accordance with the Clay County Sheriff's Office Policy 102.3.5 concerning awards, I'm privileged to nominate Fire Chief Justin Martin and Holly Emergency Response Team Member Rod Ron Siechslag, correct? To receive the Citizen Citation for Distinguished Service Award. On April 10, 2015, the Clay County Sheriff's Office was dispatched to the area of Lake 15 on a report of a dog that was stuck on the ice. When I arrived, I learned there was a dog that had fallen into the lake and was now clinging to the ice in the middle of the lake. There were two people in a small boat trying to get the dog, but were unable to break the ice to get where the dog was at. A short time later, a male came out of his residence and said that he believed the dog was his and went out onto the lake in a kayak in an attempt to rescue the dog. I contacted Holly Fire Chief Justin Martin and asked if his department had any resources that could be used to try and rescue the dog. I was informed by Fire Chief Martin that Holly Hurt had some type of ice rescue equipment. I requested Holly Hurt to be contacted and respond to the scene. While waiting for other responders to arrive, the dog's owner was able to reach the area where the dog was at. The owner of the dog, Cody Cook, was not able to lift the dog into his kayak and was now stuck on the lake holding onto his dog. Cody began to yell back to the shore for more help and asking the other responders to hurry. I met Holly Hurt at the boat landing on Lake 15 and learned that Holly Fire Chief Justin Martin also responded on his own to assist. Fire Chief Martin had said that he responded to the Hurt building to assist with equipment and was then requested to respond to the lake as well. Fire Chief Martin and Holly Hurt member Ron Siechslag loaded ice rescue equipment into the boat and began to the area where Cody was with his dog. Fire Chief Martin and Hurt member Siechslag were able to drive the boat on open water for some distance before reaching a large piece of ice that was blocking their ability to reach Cody. At this time, Hurt member Siechslag donned a special cold water rescue suit and began onto the ice using a combination sled flotation device. Fire Chief Martin stayed in the boat and used ice chisels to try and break the ice away so he could get the boat to Cody and Hurt member Siechslag. Hurt member Siechslag was eventually, eventually made it to the area where Cody was with the dog. The area that he was in was open water, but was on the edge of another large piece of ice. As Hurt member Siechslag was attempting to assist the dog onto the rescue sled flotation device, he lost his balance and fell into the icy frigid waters. To make matters worse, his leg was entangled into a strap on the rescue sled and his rescue suit was slightly choking him, causing him to gag. Hurt member Siechslag then yelled back to Fire Chief Martin for assistance. At this time, Fire Chief Martin used the boat and began ramming into the ice to break it up faster so he would be able to reach Cody, Hurt member Siechslag, and the dog quicker. This action proved to be successful as Fire Chief Martin was able to get the boat to everyone and began assisting them. Fire Chief Martin was able to get Cody, Hurt member Siechslag, and the dog all onto the boat and bring them back to the safety of shore. In speaking with Cody and his parents after the incident, it was evident that they were very appreciative of the actions of Fire Chief Martin and Hurt member Siechslag. The dog, a black Labrador Retriever named Gabby, also looked like she was very appreciative as well.
Before I give them the award, I just want to read the criteria for this award. It's the Citizen Citation for Distinguished Service Award. Citizens who provide assistance to the sheriff's office, which involves risk to their life or where the citizen contributes to the saving of another person's life, are eligible to receive the Clay County Citizen Citation for Distinguished Service Award.
Thank you, Justin and Ron. Good, good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is citizens to be heard. Looks like all our citizens are leaving, so they don't want to be heard, so. Seeing those citizens to be heard, next item is improvement to payment of bills and vouchers.
I shall move.
Second.
Motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Brian, you want to give us the update on the avian flu?
Good morning.
Good morning, Brian.
Sorry, I'd been here last week. I think Justin filled in pretty good, though.
He did a good job.
Got in all the information. This week, I kind of shortened sweet. Just the producer in Clay County is moving along. They finished one barn and they got one more barn left to depopulate. They have got their decomposing sites set up, so they're automatically going out to that area. So they're not in the barn decomposing, they'll be outside. And I wanted to send a, some information for you to keep. It's for the outdoor composite sites. And this basically is just kind of the timeline, if you want to keep one of them. And also, I also have a kind of update of where it's at in the state of Minnesota, mapping system. So if you want to keep this, but again, this is confidential, so you would just pass around and send it back to me. I appreciate it.
You want it back?
Yeah. The only other thing I can tell is that Saturday morning, I got notified from Niklet County, their emergency manager called me, and they had a chicken producer down there. They had got the flu into it and they have like a 2 million chicken facility there. And she was kind of looking for me for some information, so.
Where was that at?
Niklet County. Kind of south, more southeast.
North of Mankato.
Yep. Yeah, so I think that's about it. I know I did Taves. One of our, one of our turkey producers there has, they've taken all their turkeys out of their barn, so I think it was just a time for them to go to market, though, basically. Otherwise, I have not. The only other thing I'd like to tell you about is that, that they've done some fox surveillance in Clay County. Backyard fox, a total of 74 had been checked, and they have, none of the results have come back. But again, they are out USDA and their crews are out doing the surveillance for, you know, besides just producers, everybody else, so in that affected area. For the completion of the depopulation, we have not set a date yet, but it sounded like maybe at the end of this week for our producer. So I think that's about it.
Any questions for Brian? Looks like nothing. Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Georgia, building manager, Georgia Bowdrey, authorization entered into a 60-month lease agreement for postage machine.
Good morning. I have three requests here. The first one would be for replacement of the postal machine in the family service center mailroom. Our machine is currently seven years old and we're no longer able to get parts, so in order for us to continue to put postage on our outgoing mail, we would need a replacement machine. We did obtain two quotes and I'm recommending we go with the lease agreement, for a 60-month lease agreement with Pitney Bowes for the Connect Plus 2000 series.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
The next lease agreement is for a five-year lease agreement with Minnesota Rural, or Rural Sep. And that's for a five-year lease agreement for office space at the family service center. The first year, or for the remainder of this year, for 2015, the rate would remain the same at 1175 a square foot. And then for the additional four years, it would increase with the rest of the tenants, which are, we're proposing the 50 cent per square foot increase for the rent, for the remainder of the term, which would end in 2020.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
I got a question. When we, when we put on a fairly long-term lease like this, do we have language in there that allows us to shift them if something develops where?
In the majority of the lease agreements, there's a 60 or 90-day out clause. There isn't specific in there for relocation, although we have done that in the past. We have relocated them, but there is usually a clause in there for 60 or 90 termination.
It might be something worthwhile looking at in the future, Jenny, too, you know, because over time, you can end up having clients leave using, taking advantage of that opt-out clause. And then we have a new tenant come in and we, without making some shift, sometimes you can't make them work. And I, so your goal would be not to have to do it, of course, but it'd certainly be nice to have the ability and the understanding that it could happen, so. But it's something to be thinking about for future.
Okay. Any other questions? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
The third and last request is to replace our fleet vehicle that was damaged by the airplane in the most recent accident. I think it was in, actually, it was probably in February, about. And we did receive reimbursement for the vehicle was totaled by the MCIT, the county's insurance trust. We are still waiting on the $1,000 deductible, which will be reimbursed by the airplane's insurance carrier. And we may have received it, but to date, I haven't gotten update that we've received it yet. And then the towing reimbursement fee, so we're looking to replace it with a leased vehicle. We currently have two that we've leased. That seems to be working out well, and we're looking at replacing it with the 2015 Ford Fusion. And that would be a 60-month lease agreement.
Okay. Kevin?
I'm just kind of wondering why the, why the whole damage wasn't paid for by the?
I'm not sure why it wasn't. They just indicated when they sent the check that once they got the reimbursement from the airplane insurance company, they would refund the thousand, but until then, they wouldn't, they didn't send the total.
I think they subrate that.
Yeah. MCIT's probably paid us and then they're going to go after that insurance company, I assume, so.
Well, I would, I would hope so. We'll never get, we'll never get to be the star county for most improved claims if we have these types of things. Joking out.
And those lease seems, you don't run into going over miles?
We haven't. We're proposing the 17,000 miles again. I just looked at it prior to coming over here. The Ford Taurus that we currently leased for the probation office, we seem to be quite a bit under, so we're going to monitor that. And when we went into the lease agreement, we indicated that, you know, this first year would be kind of a trial, so if we have to decrease or increase the mileage, we could accordingly.
I shall move to approve the proposal.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Georgia.
Yep. Thank you.
Kathy?
Good morning.
Morning.
I have with me Janelle, Detox Director.
Morning, Janelle.
Good morning.
I think we'll go through, let's see, I forget what's on the first, but we have a couple of contracts, just to, just to have some amendments. One of those is the Place, Places for Friends. It's a contract through our statewide health improvement program. And this is just, we'll have a variety of subcontracts with our ship contract. These subcontracts go through the state, so they have to approve them, and we're required to have subcontracts for the funding to get out to various agencies. So this one is just in, one of the many that were, that are going to come forth. All of the funding for these subcontracts comes through the statewide health improvement program grant that you had previously approved. So this is for approval of the funding contract for Place for Friends. That will be a contract agreement through Public Health and a Place for Friends for some ship funding that they're going to provide to their clients. That is a facility in Wilken County, but it, it comes through Clay because we're the fiscal manager of that grant. So that will require a separate approval for that contract.
Any questions on that for Kathy? Have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Another agreement that replaces the previous one is our Nurse Family Partnership Program. That's our home visiting program that we have had since about 2000. And that is the home visiting program to first-time moms and families. The reason why there's a change in that agreement, it was a Clay-Wilken Community Health Board Agreement, and now it is just a agreement with Clay County Public Health and the National Office of the Nurse Family Partnership Program. So the only change with that agreement is just the name change.
I shall move to approve the agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. And then the amendment with our Southeast Human Services Contract. The change in that amendment, that contract was from July of 2014, and it goes through June of 2015. And the amendment is, they had a, an amount of 225, not to exceed 225 on the, 225,000 on the original agreement. And we obviously have served more clients than that total amount, so they've amended that agreement to increase of 185,000. So that total agreement will, will be 410,000. That agreement goes through June of this year, and then we'll enter into a new agreement with Southeast. These are for the detox clients. I apologize, I didn't say that at the beginning. So that amendment is just changing the amount that Southeast, increasing the amount on the agreement to carry us through June of 2015.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. You've got a request to fill positions. You also have an addition here, so that would be besides those two, right?
Correct. Yes. So we, we talked about the request to fill two 24-hour positions in detox. One is an LPN for 24 hours a week, and one is a technician for 24 hours a week. This will help fulfill some of those staffing requirements and vacancies that we have. We did bring this forth to the PIC committee a couple of weeks ago. And so we will still have open positions, so we'll still utilize our variable hour staff, but right now, we're filling really these positions with variable hour staff. So this will allow us to have a more consistent staffing pattern. And then we'll still have a few hours, 24 hours a week, for variable hour staff to pick up. So those are the two original requests, is for the 24-hour week LPN and, and the 24-hour week technician. And as I stated before, now with the VA funding and of course, the Southeast's funding, it should be budget neutral.
Yeah. Our PIC committee did review this, and, and we did come out in support of this partially with the understanding that it would, it'd pretty much be budget neutral. So you do anticipate having revenues, additional revenues coming in to offset these changes? Is that correct?
That's correct. Now, with the VA funding, in March, we had, you know, 7,680 revenue, and that was unanticipated because we, we weren't sure about the contract with the VA. And that contract is still in place, and we're still serving VA clients, as well as the Southeast clients.
How long is that contract for?
That contract is for a year.
Okay.
Yeah. And then with, with ongoing renewal, they anticipate renewal. I mean, they anticipate a five-year contract, for sure, but.
Okay. Any further discussion? Board's wishes?
I'll move to approve, to fill the two positions.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Okay. The other position.
And then the other additional position, I'm not sure if you know about Don from Detox. He ended up having a stroke on Friday, and then he passed away on Monday. And he was our lead RN, so we would need to fill his position. So that was my additional request. He was full-time lead RN, so if we can advertise internally and externally.
I'd move approval of the request. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, would you need a backfill on that, possibly? Will someone internally apply, do you believe? Do you anticipate an internal application?
Well, you know what? I would include in my motion that if it was, that you would be allowed backfill.
Okay. Sure. So you have that latitude again? Thanks.
All in favor? Go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate our sympathies to his family and the staff on the loss. Thank you.
I agree.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. AmeriCorps Volunteer Opportunity, Shannon. Good morning, Shannon.
What I'm bringing is a resolution. We have already applied for the AmeriCorps position, and if we are chosen as a host site, that the resolution states that we would then put the program into effect again. We have a Green Corps volunteer this year, and it's been a really great resource for us. We don't pay them anything. Our in-kind is just their office space and the things that they use. And their AmeriCorps volunteer this year is not here. She's at training. I would have brought her with us, but Beth has worked on signage, she's worked on flyers, she's, she was spearheaded the Take Jack Back. She helped organize the city meeting. She's, was real instrumental in getting the message in a bottle program up and going finally. She's been a great resource, and so we look to have that again. Our volunteer next year, if we do, if we are chosen as a host site, would again focus a lot on the communication portion of solid waste. How do we get out to the residents, what our services are? And also looking again at what we offer and how we can improve that. It's always nice to have a fresh set of eyes. So I am just asking that the resolution is signed, so if we are chosen next year, we'd be able to do that.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Yeah. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Looks like this has been a great.
It's been a great resource for us.
Very good. Very good.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
Shannon, I just have a couple of questions. Did you have a good response for the electronics drive in Barnesville?
We did. We did. It was not as large as last year. Last year, we filled a semi and we left six pellets on the ground. This year, we didn't, didn't fill a semi, but we had, I believe it was 130 drop-offs, so that, that was real good. And I know at the Household Hazardous Waste Collection, they also, they had 25, which was double what they did last fall.
Great.
So it's been real great. And then we had the Morehead one this Saturday, where we had 240, I believe. And then this Saturday, again, we'll be in Morehead, and then next, the next following Saturday, we'll be in Holly. So it's a busy season.
Yeah. It's good to call it trash week or your.
Yep. The cleanup, cleanup weeks. And I've been getting a lot of calls about things, too, which is nice. We had a miscommunication with the Cleanup Week website, the City of Fargo Administrates. They didn't look for information, so we're staffing some additional hours we weren't planning on this week, which has been interesting, but, but it's been a real good response, so.
I had an opportunity to drive by last Saturday morning, and you guys, you guys have that set up pretty, pretty good.
It was. It was real nice this year.
It looked like a really good flow for the, for all of our citizens to be able to work their way through that process.
And it's real nice, because a lot of times, there are elderly people bringing things in, so if we can get them through and get them unloaded, because their son or daughter or somebody has loaded it for them. So it's real nice with the staffing we've been able to have.
And I just want to thank you again for the recycling bins that are throughout the county at the gas stations. I've heard a lot of positive comments from people, so I hope people are utilizing those as well.
And like, last time I looked in there, the contamination level was real low, too. So it's been a well-received program.
Okay. Yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Yeah, we did vote.
I think you did.
Yeah, we did. Rhonda, come on up. You're already here on deck.
Actually, it's not going to be me. I'm just the expert. So I think the adult, LIT is first. Yeah, the adult mental health. So Allison and Ben? Okay. So I'm going to let them.
Thank you.
Allison and Ben, welcome.
Mr. Chair, Allison is the co-chair of the Local Advisory Council for Adult Mental Health. John Salter is the secretary. And I wanted to say, before they start, according to. And I wanted to say before they start, according to mental health people in the state of Minnesota, Morehead has very likely the number one advisory council in the state of Minnesota.
Great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I think in part, it's due to the, having a number one county commissioners.
There might be some debate on that, but...
Solid debate. Monday recurring.
I believe you've all got our report, and I'll start off with our mission statement to advise and educate the county board of unmet needs of adults with mental illness and their families in Clay County. To review and evaluate the continuum of services for adults with mental illness, to provide public education and awareness of mental illness, and to promote mental health in Clay County.
This is Ben Erie, the co-chair of Morehead, the other co-chair of Advisory Council.
This year, we had speakers on a wide variety of topics. Usually, what we try to do at each meeting, in addition to our taking care of business and things, we try to have a speaker or a guest from one of the local agencies or organizations. We had people from MABUS to talk about transportation, which is a serious issue for us. We had members of Regroup to talk about their services. And we had Lakeland come in and sort of give a pretty comprehensive overview of everything they're up to and doing, so we can be familiar with that.
Okay, so, our notable activities, we were part of the Community Connection at the Fargo Dome. We also tried to continue our outreach, specifically using libraries. We're trying to get more rural outreach, so we had some, we actually had some displays. In the Holly Library, we also had some, some of our brochures and things like that out at Reach out in Holly, to try to expand, getting more individuals active out there. We also set up a booth at the B Cow Fair. The big thing is that we, this year, we were asking, traditionally, we've just asked about case management waitlists, but we've kind of expanded that within last year, where we're asking more specific information. So, what is psychiatry, waitlist on psychiatry, what are waitlists on therapy? And then, really trying to identify some needs based off of those waitlists also, because we've seen, and we'll get into needs, but we've seen, like, the psychiatry waitlist just jump, even therapy waitlists dramatically increase.
This year, our recommendations include increased funding for case management services. Research by the LAC indicates over the last year, average waiting lists for case management services have been at about 20 potential clients with average wait times of over three months. The effect we hope to see with more funding for case management is more timely delivery of services, resulting in, among other things, more efficient coordination of care and possible reduction in emergency services and inpatient hospital stays.
Sorry, I got something to do. We want to kind of pursue whatever is available to fund a crisis bed unit in Clay County. Fergus, I think, is the closest, and that's been very effective. And this is a great way to keep people out of the ER and keep people out of the inpatient hospital. It's sort of intermediary step between being at home and being in an inpatient mental health setting. So, that's something we would really like to see in the Morehead area and Clay County.
From personal knowledge, I know that instead of going, driving all the way to Fergus Falls, since there isn't a crisis bed unit in Clay County, that people are just using, utilizing the emergency rooms. And the crisis unit is more cost-effective.
And the last way is really trying to figure out ways to implement rural transportation. One of the largest barriers that, I, I actually practice out in Holly clinically, and one of the big barriers there is that, right now, we only have a clinician out there three days a week. And we have a lot of individuals with more kind of complicated needs, psychiatric needs, that really struggle being able to come to the, to the Morehead area, to be able to get those needs met. And so, we're really trying to look at how do we, not only look at the kind of, the transportation infrastructure within town, but then, how do we effectively provide services to folks in rural Clay County also?
And we also have our current member list for the county board's approval.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the list as presented by co-chairs.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second to approve the list. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
I believe you also have a proclamation for May Mental Health Awareness Month.
We do. And I will read that proclamation. Whereas, the U.S. Surgeon General states that mental health is fundamental to health and indispensable to personal well-being, family and interpersonal relationships, and contributes to community and society. And whereas, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration confirms that one in five American adults will have a diagnosable mental health condition in any given year. And whereas, Ronald C. Kessler, PhD in the U.S. National Comorbidity Survey, states that 50% of Americans will meet the criteria for a diagnosable mental health condition sometime in their life, and half of those people will develop conditions by the age of 14. And whereas, the U.S. Surgeon General has found that a range of treatment exists for most mental disorders, and the efficacy of mental health treatments are well documented. And whereas, Clay County has made a commitment to community-based systems of mental health care for all residents, and has appointed a local mental health advisory committee for adults. And whereas, the guiding principles of community mental health care have always been comprehensiveness, cost efficiency, effective management, and high quality and consumer responsive services. And these principles are now being adopted by private and public healthcare payers. And whereas, the National Mental Health Association, the National Council for Community Behavioral Healthcare, and their national partners, the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, and their local affiliates observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health and illness. Therefore, we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim May 2015 Mental Health Month in Clay County. As Commissioners of Clay County, we call all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommend our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. Adopted in the 5th day of May 2015.
Mr. Chair, I move, we accept this for Clay County?
Second. Have a motion and a second on the proclamation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for what you do. Great work.
Mr. Chairman, before they leave, I, you know, they, they come before us, and they, they give some recommendations here, and I, I would like to see our board follow up with, with Rhonda, and on Rhonda's staff on, on these recommendations to see what we can do. We don't want to just have you come and read it and ignore it, so I think we will follow up on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the biggest one, I believe, is transportation.
It always has been.
Always has been, and hopefully, it always will not be. But I know Lakeland Mental Health says a lot of people don't get to their appointments because they have no way to get there and back. Transportation is the number one issue, and we have to continue to look at it. Thank you.
Thanks again. Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council Annual Update.
I do have official proclamations for three that are being asked of each case. Please do the ones that you sign.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, I got my papers all fixed here for us. So, I am here on behalf of the Local Advisor for Children's Mental Health, and our mission statement is to promote an accessible, comprehensive, and unified mental health delivery system within Clay County. We, we, our work is driven by a work plan, and so, what I have provided for you in your board packet is our board report that goes off of that work plan. The plan is, is developed every fall, and we work through it into the spring, concluding with, of course, Mental Health Month. So, our first goal is working in collaboration with agencies and organizations. And I will also say that this year, we had kind of a fun year, because we focused on the 25th anniversary of the Mental Health Act through the state. And so, we kind of wanted to do some extra things this year, just to kind of bring awareness, not just in Mental Health Month, but in every month that we could. So, we have partnered with the Child Abuse Prevention to pay for a bulletin or billboard that you've probably seen, it's at the corner of 11th Street and First Avenue. And so, we, we partnered with them on that. We've also done an article every month in the Kid Source Newsletter, and that goes out to about 3,500 children in the Morehead School Districts. So, that's been a really good source. We've also had a spotlight on mental health, where we have providers come in and talk as well. And so, we've done a number of things. We're, we're finishing off our year tonight. We've asked PACER, is a metro organization, to come in, and they are going to be doing a training on challenging behaviors. And we have about 30 parents and community members and school people attending that, so we're very pleased with that. And of course, many of our members are also part of the rethink mental health process that's going on between Cass County and Clay County. We're really looking at how we can kind of, not necessarily unify all services, but have some consistency and some understanding about how each state and county operates. Of course, our main focus is always identifying those unmet needs from the family and consumer perspective. And I am the keeper of all of the past minutes and surveys that we have done. So, I got to take a kind of a walk down memory lane, and so, for some of you know that I've been here for a very long time. And, but I actually wasn't here specifically, I think, when they started. But we started doing the survey in 2002, and then it appears that we took some years off where the survey was not happening, or I just have some missing documents within what I was provided by past chairs. But then, we started up again in about 2006, and we, and we moved forward. So, I, the positive in that, I want to tell you, I'm very excited to see throughout the surveys, that we have improved on many of the services, such as respite care that's now available. And that hasn't always been available. We also have some crisis services through the mobile piece. Some new ones that have cropped up are kind of some things that are really out of our control in many ways, and that has to do with insurance, private insurance not really covering some of the things that our families might need, those that don't qualify for any county assistance. But the one consistent thing, and the adult representatives spoke about it as well, is our transportation piece. This has been noted on the survey since 2002. So, that's how long we've been kind of bringing this concern to you. And we've had some meetings with Rhonda and some groups to kind of talk about that. This year is really the first year, from my looking back on the surveys, where it's really been noted that there's trouble with the rural transportation piece. And it's noted by our providers, as well as our family and consumer members. I just spoke yesterday with one of our rural superintendents, and you know, he's really kind of in a tough spot with providing some mental health services for kids, when they just can't get into Morehead. And when they do come into Morehead, they're losing quite a bit of school time in order to come into Morehead and, and access that. And of course, parents who have the ability to, you know, come from their jobs to Holly, pick up their kids, bring them in here and whatnot, are missing quite a bit of work. So, so that, you know, it's an ongoing concern, and it's a really strong concern that I hope that we can work to resolve in, in the upcoming year. I know that the state is trying to develop some regional transportation regions to, and hire a coordinator. I'm not really sure how that's going to work. We have an opportunity to provide some input in that. Of course, their closest stakeholder meeting was in St. Cloud. I've asked them actually if they'd like to come up here, and we would host it as the LAC, just so we can start some conversations about how do we address, address that. Going on to goal three, we have arranged input from the local system of care providers. Ben came in and talked about summit guidance and the work that he's doing, and particularly the work that he's doing in the Yulin Hidrodal School District, and some of the needs that he has seen there with kids. Rhonda comes in on an annual basis and talks to us about our, our county budget. We are, very much have agency updates at every one of our council meetings, and we're very pleased that this year, our membership list, which we've provided for you, is also expanded to Solutions Behavioral Health, because that's an area that we've just not had a lot of representation. And so, Nicole is here from Solutions today, and we're very grateful that she's able to attend our LAC meetings. As far as gaps and things that the providers noted, again, you know, I've already mentioned the transportation. Paperwork is becoming very overwhelming for our families, particularly those of where English is not their first language. And then, keeping up with the paperwork, making sure that it's in all of the time. We've got, you know, we, we are doing much better in our psychiatric services and our diagnostic assessment, but there is still quite a long wait sometimes for those assessments. And the assessments are what drives the programming and what they qualify for. So, when we can get kids in there quicker, we can get them the services they need in a much more timely manner. Our fourth goal is the Mental Health Awareness Piece, and I've just kind of listed on the report many of the things that we have done. We had a resource booth at the Kid Fest, and it was very interesting for a number of families who came to our booth this year, just wondering what to do with their children and looking for some services. So, we, we're glad that we have the Who Do You Call brochure piece for that. So, as far as our recommendations, our first recommendation is to, is regarding transportation. It's been identified as a need, and we would like, so, to continue to work collaboratively with other groups to address this ongoing barrier to, to transportation, whatever those pieces are. And then, also wanting to look at the mental health services in the rural part of our county. Because Reach is, is seeing more and more families. We have the work that's being done in Yulin Hidrodal and other parts of our rural county that need those services. So, our other recommendation is to continue to address those mental health needs for families that are living in the rural part of, part of our county. So, that is our, our report. We also have our membership list that we would ask for approval for this year. As noted, we have, Solutions is one of our newest members, as well as LaDonna from Freedom Resource, who now has a Morehead office, so we're very pleased that she is in there. And then, we also have a proclamation that's different than the one that you just approved, and that has to do with Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, which is Thursday of this week.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the list of members.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the membership. Last, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. And I'll read the Children's Mental Health Awareness Day proclamation. Whereas, addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is a fundamental to building the health, resilience, and future of Clay County. And whereas, the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for children, youth, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility. And whereas, it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts and actions toward our children, children's mental health and well-being. And whereas, Clay County... And whereas Clay County, in its policy and planning roles, supports effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. Now therefore, we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2015, to be Children's Mental Health Awareness Day throughout Clay County. And urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every children's mental health needs to unite on that day and observance of such exercises as well acquaint the people of Clay County with the fundamental necessity of nurturing the social and emotional well-being of children from birth and providing effective, accessible services and support for children and youth with mental health needs and their families. Adopted this 5th of May, 2015.
I so move to approve the Children's Mental Health proclamation.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Carolyn.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the same comments on these findings that Carol has done as well. And, you know, I've sat on this board for quite a while and we just constantly hear about transportation. And I, I would like someday that we don't have to talk about that anymore and actually do something about it.
She does that, too.
But, but, but part of, part of it needs to be that we need to relook at what areas are we missing? And then, and then what are our current resources to handle them? And why can't our current resources handle them? And then if not, what can we do about it? Because otherwise, you're going to come back here every year with your report and you're going to say, guess what? We're not meeting our transportation needs. And we're going to have people out there having these issues. It makes me wonder going back to Urban Transit Days. Had some, that was before your time. I shouldn't even look at you. VJ was here. He knows, he knows what those headaches were.
Well, one example of, of that would be is that our current public transportation doesn't go as far as Solutions Behavioral Health offices. We have a number of families that are served there. So that's just kind of one example.
Could, could you, could you actually kind of list for us the areas that is not reachable from a transportation standpoint for your clients?
Sure, we can do some more work on that.
Well, I think, I think we're going to have to.
Yep.
And then coordinate it with Rhonda. And it might be something that whether it's adult mental health or, or children's mental health issues, the transportation issues in rural Clay County are real and they've been there for a long time. And how can we help solve those issues? And I, mental health is of concern in a lot of areas. It goes from, and it goes from that and it leads to people in our jails. It's all over in the place. It's not, and I just, I just, I'm tired of just hearing reports about it and then we're not getting anywhere.
I appreciate that.
And I'm not blaming that on anybody, but I, but.
No, no, it's a complicated problem.
And I understand, and then I understand because then you have certain criteria where you have, depending on who you're taking where, there are certain rules and regulations in all of them. And one of your, one of our resources might not qualify. I understand all that, but we got to figure out something or we're going to be doing this for the next 50 years.
But the transportation piece is also not just our rural citizens. It's a huge part of the isolation, unfortunately. We have to address that. But it's also an, an issue in town. I mean, there are, there are people that live in Morehead that don't have the resources to get where they need. And, and if we can address the transportation piece, we can maybe help that spin that happens if they're not receiving treatment. So I agree with Commissioner Campbell. I think it's something we need to definitely look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A Place for Hope Recovery and Wellness Center.
My name is Deana Geisler, and I have to apologize. I did not put my hand out Friday at time. And this is Deborah Schillinger. She is our life enrichment coordinator.
Morning, ladies.
I handed out to you our current, our draft of our current brochure for our, this year, and our participation numbers for 2014, some of the charts that I'll be going through, and then our budget for 2015. So that's what's in the handouts. I want to thank you again for your continued support of the Social Connection, now known as a Place for Hope Recovery and Wellness Center. Social Connection has been around since 1998. It started in the room of one of our founding members, Judy Emery, and today it has 790 lifetime members. 2014 has brought a lot of highs and lows at the Social Connection, but through it all, our members, our staff, and our supporters have been very helpful in getting us on the right road. First, I want to start out with the new mission that we had in 2014. The mission of the Social Connection is to provide a safe, enriching, and supportive recovery environment for adults living with a serious and persistent mental illness or serious mental illness, to build social relationships, promote peer mentoring, improve health outcomes, and provide educational opportunities to lead a successful, integrated life in the community. And you will see that a Place for Hope's, the only thing that's changed with that is the name in that mission. In order to be a member, somebody needs to be a Clay County resident. They need to be 18 or older. They need to have a diagnosis of a serious and persistent mental illness or serious mental illness, and then complete a background check and a short application process. And our vision that we have at a Place for Hope or the Social Connection is to have a community where individuals living with mental illness achieve their potential in living healthier, balanced, enriched lives with improved mental health, positive social relationships, and become active community members. You will see in our brochure, we have guiding principles and goals. Our goals are to help improve mental health. And we offer a variety of recovery support services through peer mentoring, referrals, and help in transitioning into the community in a forgiving and supportive environment. We help build social relationships by helping members build skills in how to increase their confidences and ability in handling social situations. We provide life-enriching activities that model appropriate social interactions, increase intellectual and tactile stimulation, and build trusting friendships and relationships. We enhance support. Not only do we make referrals to agencies, but we offer support that helps our members stretch their monthly budgets, assistance in the form of daily food baskets as available, occasional meals, daily snacks and coffee, computer and internet access, videos and TV to watch, and clothing and household donations, along with hygiene and even pet supplies as we have those available. And we instill hope. We provide an entry point for individuals living with mental illness to get outside of their social isolation in their home environments. Some of the 2014 highlights for activities include, we celebrate all the holidays at our center. And that relies a lot on our member volunteers in order to achieve that. We, this last year, we did sledding. We went to a planetarium show. We went to the Marcus movies. We had some different parties at the club. We went to Old 52 Mulchop. We went to the Fargo Forest, Red River Zoo, Chahinkapoo Zoo, bowling, a variety of craft classes, journal making. We went to different plays. We went to the Derby Girls, bingo, cards, games. We have a pool table. We went to the circus and a variety of video gaming and web hop games, farmer's market trips. There was a variety of activities that we do with our members. And it's always free to our members to go into these activities. They don't have to pay to get in, which is really helpful on some, with somebody with a tight budget. We offer educational events at our club, and that has include topics on nutrition, budgeting, goal setting, the wellness wrap plans, which is Wellness Recovery Action Plans, cooking, community resources, Wellness in the Woods conferences. We also help our members go to different conferences, which include Wellness in the Woods, the Barker Clay Otter Tail Wilken Mental Health Conferences. We had a walking, a walking club. We went to Day on the Hill. We had a voters' education in our, in our center, and a variety in arts and crafts classes that we have offered. We have held two fundraisers last year, a Day of Hope and Letters on the Fence. And we also sold some crafts at Bell Park in Morehead Center Mall. As I mentioned, we had 719, 90, 790 lifetime members. And in every way, our participation is higher in 2014 than it has been in previous years. And if you look at the, the charts, you will see that in 2014, we had 7,166 member visits and 2,300 guest visits. That's up 32% and 51% from previous years. We've had 63 new members, which is up 50% from the previous years. And an unduplicated attendance, that means actual active members of 220, which is up 31%. Our daily attendance averages 26 and on weekdays and nine on the weekends. And those are up from previous years at 43% and 50%. We were open 322 days and being open every holiday with our largest attendance day being 48. And we rely, there is only, I'm the only full-time staff member. Last year, we had two part-time staff members. This year, we have just one part-time staff member. And so we rely a lot on volunteers, on our member volunteers, our community volunteers. And we've built a lot of new relationships with some of the colleges. And we also have worked with Rural Minnesota SEP for work training volunteers and work experience also for work training volunteers.
Can I interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
You said that you're up 32% over the year 2013, in 2014.
Yep.
Do you know what you're trending for 2015? You must be higher.
Yeah, we are still higher than we were last year.
Okay.
I haven't been tracking those numbers yet.
Yeah, that's fine.
But yes, we've had a, when, I do have some highlights as far as what we've planned for 2015 because there's definitely a lot of changes. You definitely, you'll see our two charts that we have there. In 2014, our operating budget was 157,151. We really struggled in 2014 keeping our doors open in that we were short of funds. So in November, to preserve our remaining income, we had to lay off our two part-time staff members. And then we did receive a grant from the Bremmer, Otto Bremmer Foundation, which had been in the works, but we hadn't heard anything. And so then we were able to hire, open up back one position. And Deborah Schillinger was offered that position of, as a life enrichment coordinator, and she's also a certified peer specialist. And our actual expenses in 2014 were 169,783. Our revenue turned out to be at the end, 181,910, oh, 910 dollars. And 47% of our revenue comes from the Becker Clay Otter Tail Wilken Mental Health Fund. And then 24% comes from the Clay County Mental Health Initiative, and 22% from other grants and 7% from donations and fundraisers. Our 2014 expenses, you will see, broken down, 48% is payroll, 31% is for rent and utilities, 5% for food and supplies, 3% for activities, 5% is vehicle costs, and 8% is all our other costs. So we, we do a lot with, with the limited budgets that, that we're working with. For 2015, we've got some exciting plans. First, we have our new name, A Place for Hope Recovery and Wellness Center, and a new logo. This will help us build our identity and direct, direct us in the mission that our mission is leading us. And it will also involve, it's involved a lot of work in public relations and outreach so that we can open up new opportunities for our club, increase our members, and diversify our funding resources is one of our goals for 2015. We have two new community members as board members, so building our board is another goal for 2015. We will be having some staffing changes in 2015. Unfortunately, I will be leaving A Place for Hope, and I've put in my resignation. So we currently have the executive director position open. Our plans were to initially also include hiring a new program director and a part-time rural outreach worker driver because we too have noticed that transportation is a huge issue to get our members that live in the, particularly Yulin Hiddardal area to our center. They often have to coordinate with the rural transit. And that's only allowed so much, like, I think it's like one visit a month, and they just have to have that timing right. So our hope was to hire a driver. We do have a 12-person van to be able to go kind of do a loop and pick up some of our members. So that was in our planned budget. Our planned budget for this year is 236,000. So you'll see that we have ambitious goals to get things done this year. We have received a grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota this year as well, and there are a couple other grants in the way. And Otto Bremmer Foundation has suggested that we would be able to get additional funding and have encouraged us to reapply every year for this year to help us reach those goals. We do have our second annual Day of Hope, which will be May 21st from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. We're going to be holding it at the Garage Bar in Morehead. This is our silent auction campaign, and this is our biggest fundraiser of the year. So we encourage you to attend, attend that. We're also currently having a shoe drive. There's a drop-off box in the lobby of the Family Service Center, also in our facility. And we are collecting hopefully 7,500 pairs of shoes by the end of May. Those are then, we're working with Funds2Org. Those are then shipped overseas to create micro businesses for individuals who are in third world countries. And then we're reimbursed based on the pounds of shoes that we collect. So if you have any extra shoes, drop them off in those boxes. And five years down the road, we hope to, that we're still known to be a welcoming and enriching environment for, on people to come in, that we're kind of the premier mental health, social organization in our community. That's our goals. Some of our additional goals are to have our own center. Our lease is up in March 20, March of 2017. We do pay a lot for the space that we rent. So we are hoping that eventually to have a better centralized facility in Morehead. And hopefully having a satellite city maybe, or a satellite center in Holly. So that way, we can reach more of those members who are living out in a rural community. We do hope to be open seven days a week and include more evenings, to have that rural route driver so that we can bring our members to our club, to have an increased veteran and youth presence at our club. You know, and, and youth, I would say from the 18, because we do have to have an age of 18, but that younger generation, 18 and older, to start getting them connected with us. To have a greater variety of educational and health enrichment classes, to hold events in different cities, you know, hold an event in Barnesville, hold an event in Holly, Yulin and Hiddardal, just to, again, build more of awareness of who we are and what we have to offer. To serve more meals frequently, our members tend to like, enjoy having the meals there. We would like to see an increased community presence, a decreased stigma towards mental illness, to have healthier members, and offer more health opportunities for them at our club, and to have enough staff so that way we can do everything it is that we want to do. And our goal is to also have a year of operating reserve in the bank so that we're not at the risk of closing again. That just adds to the stress for ourselves and our members to be able to do that. So we want to thank you for continued support. And if you have any questions?
Questions for these ladies? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you again, like I said, for your continued support. And please stop in, feel free to stop in and, and visit, and definitely drop off any shoes. We need shoes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May is Foster Care Appreciation Month. Scott and Gail.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning. We just wanted to come, it's May, Foster Care Appreciation Month, and we want to recognize our children's foster, and now foster parents in Clay County. We currently have 48 child foster care homes, and 14 of those homes are specific to relative placements. So that's. So, that's a great number of relatives that have come forward and been willing to go through the process of being licensed to care for their own relatives in their homes.
Are all these forty-eight filled at any given time?
Not all of them at one time, but I would say a majority right now. We currently, currently have about fifty-eight, probably a little over sixty now, since I wrote this, of children in our homes right now. So, I would say probably ninety percent of our homes have kids in right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so we just really wanted to come forward and ensure our appreciation to them.
Okay, any other questions for these? Got a proclamation to read here. Foster Care Month proclamation. Whereas the family serving as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support is the very foundation of our community, and whereas foster parents provide an invaluable service to the children, youth, and families of Clay County, and whereas foster parents give generously of themselves to provide nurturing, safety, guidance, hope, and love in a safe, secure, and stable home, and whereas foster parents recognize the opportunity to help a child, youth, and their family in ways that will influence them and become a supportive and lasting presence for the remainder of their lives, and whereas foster, kinship, and adoptive families who open their homes and hearts to children whose families are in crisis play a vital role in helping children and families heal and reconnect, thereby launching young people into successful adulthood, and whereas dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children resulting in greater need for more foster families, and whereas May two thousand and fifteen Foster Care Appreciation Month in Clay County is an appropriate opportunity to thank the families who embrace the often thankless responsibility of providing a home and family to children in need of affection, love, and security, and to support the efforts of those who dedicate their time to children in and leaving foster care. Now, therefore, we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May as Foster Care Month in Clay County, and we call upon all our citizens to recognize the contributions made by our foster families throughout our county. We also urge all citizens to come forward and do something positive that will help change a lifetime for children and youth in foster care. We have here to sign our hands and cause the official seal of Clay County to be offered. May fifteen.
I move the proclamation.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the proclamation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a comment. I've known some foster care families for most of my time living in Clay County, and the work that they do in raising these kids is quite remarkable. And there's been some, over the years, that have had just countless number of children in their home, and we can just say how proud we are of them for the work that they do, and we're glad that this exists in Clay County today.
Yeah, we have some amazing homes that I can call, and will leave their jobs, leave what they're doing, drop everything, to come and, you know, meet us at their house so we can drop off kids, and they just, you know, open their doors and take them in, and are just wonderful for the kids to have that ability to come there and have a nice home and welcome, safe place.
When you see, when you see young kids in one of these families, and then to have them go back twenty or thirty years later and acknowledge and recognize these foster, what have become foster parents to them, it's pretty remarkable as to how much they have done for those children and how much love there was there. And I just, it's just a really good thing. There's always, there can always be a bad one that can fall in there, but by and large, it's really good. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and medical assistance, we're going to do that later, it looks like, so, okay. Committee reports, Wayne.
We're not going to do a break.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, April thirtieth, for the Moore Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
Planning Commission was asked to be at the Churches United presentation where they updated the drawings and plans for their future project in North Moorhead. This took place at the MCOM Center. This is only preliminary at this time. There was, there was a great deal of input from the community, some negative, but mostly positive. There is a long way to go at this time regarding this project. The Churches United Board of Directors is being very open and taking in all ideas at this time, and down the line, there will be another meeting and with more community input. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Frank.
On Wednesday, I was down in Holly with the MetroCOC or the Holly Comprehensive Plan. Some of the things we discussed were sidewalks, whether, you know, they're looking at whether they put in sidewalks. A few years ago, they tore out sidewalks, and now people are looking at, we want sidewalks, and they're looking at whether it just make, they feel they have pretty wide roads, probably just put in a walking path along their roads, likely have bike paths, seen in Fargo and stuff, and other places. They're also looking at looking where the residential expansion will be, you know, they got to get their infrastructure expanded so they can expand their residential area. Churches United, on Thursday, I went to Churches United, which Wayne just covered. Last night, I went to Holly City Council Meeting. I saw Brian Green was down there explaining the armor radio and stuff, and other than that, Holly just had a regular, went through the regular City Council Meeting. After that, I went to Georgetown City Council Meeting, and they had a pretty good meeting there. Bruce Albright was there from Watershed Board. They're really working on their.
Levis?
On their dyke, their levy, I mean, their levy around their, the cost that's associated with this levy going around with Georgetown, and there's a whole of just one house there that they can't get settled, and this, I mean, this has been going on for years for those people, and they just cannot get it settled. It looks like there's something in the process now that, middle of June, they're going to have to be, the banks have to make up their mind which way they're going to go on this house and stuff like that. So, either they're going to move it or whatever the case may be. So, they, those people are pretty, they had a pretty good show up, I mean, with residents from the city, and they're very concerned how long it's taken and the assessments that they're being assessed for, because since there's been no progress made there for quite some time, they're still paying assessments, and they don't see where the, where some of that money's going.
Is there, is the floodplain issue for them? Are they in the floodplain there?
Oh, definitely. I mean, some of the people are paying two to three thousand dollars.
Yeah, but will the levy take, will it be a certified?
Well, only if it can't be get certified, and that's another thing, they have to be, you know, in order to get certified, they have to look at raising Highway seventy-five up, or put a levy across the Highway seventy-five, which is, of course, not feasible, you know, but they have to look at raising Highway seventy-five in order to get certified. Otherwise, they can't get certified. So, even though they have this levy around.
Right.
Georgetown, they can't get certified because they can't finish the project, you know, without Highway seventy-five getting done. So, they're in a heck of a dilemma there, you know, I mean, I don't know how they're going to get out of the, not paying flood insurance.
Yeah, what length, what length of road is that? Do you know, Frank, from the south end to the north?
Well, I'd say it's at least a half a mile.
You know, something they should consider looking at is similar to what we did in Oakport. One time, there was talk of doing a complete road raise of Wall Street, and instead of doing that, and then also on our County Road ninety-six, just raising the entire road, and what they had done is they had moved the levy off the highway, and they were able to just raise just a small portion on each end of the highway that tied in with the levis that were off the highway. And you could do that significant, for significantly less money than to raise an entire half-mile or three-quarters of a mile of road.
I think Bruce is going to be, Bruce Albright's going to be working with them quite regularly. I mean, he has been, he was at the meeting last night, and it's going to be him and Jerry Van Amberk and a couple of other of the board of directors from the Buffalo Watershed were there, and they plan on being there at the June meeting again to explain some more options that are, I don't know, I mean.
I would imagine there's a speed limit reduction that's on Highway seventy-five going through Georgetown anyway.
Yeah, there is.
You know, so, so I would think if they were to look at alternatives like what was done in Oakport, they might be able to do that, have them to have a massive road raise. They can do two short ones, just that ties in with where the levis tie in.
That's probably something they need to look into, but they're just trying to finish the one that they got now.
Right.
I mean, they can't even get that levy finished because of this one house, so.
But the certification is huge.
Well, definitely. I mean, all that, it's no good to them, but they can't get certified.
Yeah, every year, it's just.
I mean, it's going to help them to protect it. I mean, I don't want to say it's no good what they're doing, that, wrong words there.
It's not economically good.
Yeah, so it's just spending a lot of money there to protect some houses there, and they still have to pay. I mean, they're paying for the levy, then they have to pay the flood insurance, you know, it's just not the right, it's not working out right.
I'll shoot a memo to Bruce and remind him of what we did in Oakport.
Well, they were saying that, you know, the funding now, not at Oakport's possibly going to get there, then they got their funding, they hope to be looking for some funding for that project.
Well, it's currently in, in the legislation, so hopefully, it'll get done. I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
No, that's, thank you.
Last week, I attended, along with, I think, the majority of you, the Commissioners' Day at the Veterans Service Office, and I think that it's a great place for a lot of our veterans to spend their time, and it's a beautiful office. For those who haven't seen it, I think it's a good thing to see. And then, I also attended the Churches United for the Homeless Open Community Discussion, and I just think it's, it's a really good step for them to have community discussion and input as to what, where they will go and what they will do. Yesterday, Commissioner Campbell and I took part in the Community Facilities Planning Meeting with the City of Moorhead, the Moorhead School Board, and also us as the county. I just think continued discussion as we all move forward with our large projects is only going to benefit our citizens and residents as we carefully plan what to build and how we pay for it.
That's it, Jenny. Thank you.
Yeah, I too went to the Commissioners' Day at the Veterans Office. It's always a pleasure to go over there and to thank the many volunteers that go on in there, as well as for the staff for the good work they do. And yes, they do probably have one of the nicest Veteran Service Offices in the state. I also did attend the Churches United Event on Thursday, the thirtieth. I got there a little bit later, I missed the four o'clock, I think they must have given a couple of presentations, and the one that I was at, I had heard that there was some, some of the people with opposing views there at the four o'clock one, but the one that I was at, there was, there was none. The people that were there at that one, certainly, they had questions, but they didn't verbalize opposition, and what's significant to me and for the county's role in this is, has always been, from day one, is recognizing the need. And even those who, I find even those who have opposed this particular site, and back the last time, was going through it being that it's in my district, and the calls that I were getting, they understood the need, they just didn't want it where it was at. And what we have to be mindful for, I think, as a county board, is our purpose is to recognize the need that's there, and where something like that goes belongs to the local governing bodies to deal with, and if they're, if they've zoned it appropriately, I just, I think it's out of our hands.
City's issue.
Yeah. Now, if they were, if they were to want to put that out in a rural county setting, not only would we have the need issue, but then we would have to be dealing with, is it appropriate to be where it's at? So, then Monday, I had two meetings Monday. The first one was our jail construction meeting, and we did have Klein-McCarthy come before us, and they did give out several project options to start considering, to look at. We, as a committee, had gone through an awful lot of them, and we kind of came up with a, through the discussions, all of these are still on the table, by the way, we never, we never said none of them won't work, but we did kind of come up with a hybrid of all of these towards the end of the meeting, and which would require us to obtain some land off of our current site. And we have some options we're looking at, we have some interested landowners who have contacted us who have interest in, in possibly selling us some land close by here. And then, one other suggestion was that we check with the school board to see about the land that was once was the George Washington School, just straight to the east of us here. And the purpose of that was to have a potential different site for the law enforcement center, future law enforcement center. We do know the jail is going to be constructed right here on site where the old one is today. That certainly is our plan, and it's doubtful that that will change. So, it was a really good meeting, and I'm sure Brian and Grant, if you want to add to that. Then, a little later that day, we, Commissioner Mojo and I did have our first joint meeting on the Community Facilities Task Force Committee that was held, that's Probst Field, and we had, we attended a dad along with Moorhead Public Schools and the City of Moorhead, and each of us talked about our projects, and of course, we talked about our jail and LEC. We talked about the Moorhead Transportation, the MRF, and the household hazardous waste, how we'd like to move those all to one site, and how that would benefit citizens throughout the county getting to a single sort form of garbage collection. And then, we did talk, I did mention a little bit about our, working towards a new county highway facility in the eastern part of the county that would kind of take over where the Holly shop is now, where we would combine Holly and Ro-Log, am I correct, Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, we'd combine Holly and Ro-Log, and according to our engineers, that would probably actually work better from a maintenance standpoint. But I do want to make a comment. I read the paper this morning, and in the paper this morning, there was an article on our community task force meeting yesterday, and in the article, it stated that I had asked the Moorhead Schools to, if they would have interest in selling the land to our east here, which was the former land of the George Washington School, and in the article, it was stated, the reason that I asked for it is I would like, that I wanted us to have that as an alternate site for a jail and law enforcement center. And I, immediately when I read that, I did send an email to Helmut Schmidt, who wrote the article, and I think it was, certainly, it wasn't his intent, but I don't know if he understood what we were talking about. And I wanted to make it clear to him, and I want to make it clear to all of the citizens and those that called me already this morning, that know our intentions are not to build the jail over on Fourteenth Street North in Moorhead, and that that jail site is currently planned and very likely to stay where it's at, but that alternative site would be that, it would be looked at as an alternative site for our law enforcement center combined.
And having been at that meeting, I will reiterate that that property was only brought up in reference to a possible law enforcement center.
So, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was at the jail design meeting yesterday also, and... Yeah, I was at the jail design meeting yesterday also and we never, actually even, even that site for law enforcement center, our preference is to keep it on campus here and not move it. So we were just having a discussion about if that didn't work, what were some other possibilities to keep it close to the courthouse and the jail, so. So, and hopefully with, after, you know, I think we had a really good discussion yesterday, a lot of people involved, but pretty effective for the number of people we have on the committee in coming up with some, you know, discussion about alternatives to what the architects had come up with yesterday. So I think we're going to come up with a pretty good plan and one that will work and keep everything on campus here. Went to Commissioners' Day also at the Veteran Service Office, another, done very well by the Veteran Service Office. And like Jenny said, it's a very welcoming site and easily accessible for veterans in our county. I went to the EDC Annual Meeting last week, Brian and I, and that was a good meeting. Had presentations on workforce issues, business development, entrepreneurism, and what's going on in our, our two counties, Cass and Clay Counties. And a good report by Jim Garten, the President of Greater Fargo-Moore EDC. And that was it for me. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just a couple of things here. I attended that Veterans Day as well, the Greater FMEDC, which your chair mentioned. Some personnel evaluations, had some road performance issues that Commissioner Gross and Dave Overbow and I discussed for quite a while in regards to the surfaces of the roads out there in the county and what kind of winter we had and some of the concerns that some of the citizens have and things. So we, I think we bussed in quite a bit of time on that, if I'm not mistaken, so. Attended that Churches United for a while as well. The jail design, I don't know that there's a whole lot more I can add to that. I think you two covered that really, really well. Just all options that we're studying, looking for the best possible presentation to present to the county board for its approval. And we will get those minutes out to you as soon as Vicki gets them. And I do have these on the computer, so I can forward those eight diagrams or so that I'll forward those out to you, to all of the commissioners, so they can look at, just for, they're just discussion points, so I guess we've got to really keep that in mind and the public hopefully understands that too, that we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't look at the options that are available out there and talk about them somewhat, so. So yeah, I attended that joint city, county meeting last night as well. And then the only other issue, I guess, that I wanted to bring up today was the fact that I've sat in on a couple of the transportation concerns that we had at Social Services. And I know Commissioner Ingersoll has been there at them, I think, at least one of them that I attended. And I know also Commissioner Everett was, former Commissioner Everett was at one. And Rhonda's been there and organized them. And it's not a simple issue. And I know it keeps coming up and up and resources would help, but there's all kinds of issues. When you sit at that meeting and you hear of a mother that maybe have anxiety issues herself and she's got two or three kids and she's going to an appointment, she goes to the bus stop and then she's got a 45-minute wait for the next one to connect with, to go to the other, and you've got two or three kids that are there. So I guess I asked Rhonda to stick around because I think it's only fair for you folks to know that this has been going on quite a while. And there's lots of systems that are utilized for transportation, the taxi service, the bus service, the social management, the agents themselves do some transportation. The rural setting is a concern, the city is a concern as well, but Rhonda, maybe if you could just talk, yeah, a little bit. I think it's only fair to them to know that there's been a lot of work, there needs to be a lot more work done, but there's been a lot that's been done in regards to this too, at least looking at it.
Yeah, yes. I mean, we have, we have been meeting quite a bit and this has been a recommendation that's been brought forward by the LACs for a number of years. You're absolutely right. And we continue to meet and try to address what are some of the barriers. And I think what we continually find is certainly just transportation on this end. You know, if we had a car that would go out to Ulin and bring someone into town, would certainly meet a need. But what we find is there's a lot of issues that come with that too. Like Brian said, you know, we often run into childcare issues as well when we think about what prevents people from attending their appointments or missing appointments, so childcare issue comes up quite a bit. The other thing that we find is just folks who maybe are not doing well with their mental health. So they have an appointment and they have a ride, but because their mental health is such, they don't attend. So we work really hard with all of our case managers, all of our case managers from Lakeland Solutions, LSS, Access, a lot of those case managers provide one-on-one transportation when they identify that as a need as well, as well as some of our case managers. We work with our MA Access. Some of the meetings we had, we involved the City of Moorehead with the public transportation and participated in some of the MetroCog studies where we could give our input on where we'd like to see the buses go. And actually, I think some of the input we, that we provided was wanting to get a bus going out to the new Sanford and we're seeing that happening now. So certainly they are hearing us, so we're hopeful we're going to continue to do some of that. We have some work to do. We recently met, the regional directors in our Region Four have been meeting with Lakeland and we're going to pilot a project here in Moorehead that, the idea was to get at failed psychiatry appointments because we struggle with psychiatry time to begin with, but then when folks don't show up, it's even, you know, more of a struggle. So we're going to pilot, they're going to actually hire a position and we're going to really target some of the folks that are missing psychiatry appointments and really do a good assessment of what is it that's causing the barriers. We'll provide transportation if that's needed, but we think that we're likely going to be addressing a lot of other issues as well. So we're going to pilot that in our county and see if we can get a little better understanding of what are some of the issues people are facing. What we are also finding in one of the LACs, I think it was the adult LAC talked about the paperwork, or maybe it was the children's, folks understanding the volume of paperwork that they get in the mail, particularly for healthcare, maintaining their healthcare benefits. We are seeing that as well, we're seeing it being very overwhelming for people and sometimes they're just not opening that mail or that big packet of information that they get. So we're going to try to, you know, make some efforts to see what that's all about and try to address that issue as well because we think sometimes that's why people are missing their appointments, because they have lapses in their healthcare coverage.
Wayne, what?
Not only that, some of these people don't read very well.
Yep, correct.
And when you say overwhelming, that's an understatement.
Absolutely.
Processing what it says makes trouble. But I think as Kevin said and both LAC said, transportation is a huge issue. You take a one-on-one from somebody in northeastern Clay County, you're talking a hundred mile round trip.
Yeah.
Plus wait time.
Right.
And this might be what, in time, what it has to come to, one-on-one.
Right. The other thing that we're trying to do is we've, we did have a meeting with, and Carolyn referenced it in her report, we met with the superintendents of the Alcony School, Rural School Districts and talked a lot about mental health services within the school. So I think if we can focus some of the efforts, bringing the mental health services out to the rural area so we can see kids while they're in school or families in their home communities so that we're not, we've done some supplementing providers when they go out to provide services, we've paid some of the transportation for them if it's not billable to help get the service out there. You know, again, we do that, we, you know, what we can in terms of our resources available, but, so we're making some headway, but it is a work in progress, so.
Jenny?
So on the Lakeland Board as well, so I've been in on those discussions with the mispsychiatry appointments. Do you think that, that the default reason is transportation even if it may not be? So I mean, is it, is transportation really the sole issue or the major issue, or is it just because people who are unhealthy and are maybe worse, missing these appointments? Do you think that's, that's part of it? I realize that it is a complex issue and there are many different facets to this.
Right. I think based just anecdotally on a lot of conversations I've had, it's a mixed bag. Transportation certainly is a part of it, but I think we see childcare as another part of it and I think we see just folks with struggling mental health. I think we see some appointments set out so far that by the time the appointment time comes, people are in a different state and feel that they don't need the appointment anymore. So as we've talked, we've identified a lot of varying issues as to why, why that might be. But, you know, transportation certainly is, is a big piece, so, you know, we're going to try to remove that barrier and see what other issues come up, but it's, it's a multitude of things.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Brian?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just felt that you folks needed to hear that very perspective, good perspective on Commissioner Mojo's view that it's a complicated issue. It's sometimes the, the issue that's, that's at hand. Childcare is that issue, the, the health of the individual is that issue, that issue. So I just wanted you folks to hear that from Rhonda. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else?
I did want to, when we were at that joint task force meeting, I did raise the question with the school board about the property that's, that they have, that 80 acres on our County Road 22 and northern part up here, Cass, or Clay County 22. And they basically said that there are no plans for schools there at, at this time and they're, you know, and that's stretching out for quite some time, so. And I asked that Frank from our Highway Tracking Committee meeting because that's the one where we were going to transfer that from a county state aid road to a regular county road and switch it to 95. And when I brought that up to them, they didn't have any concerns with it, so. So I just, I just wanted you to know that as being on the Highway Tracking Committee meeting.
Okay.
So we should be good to go with our plan there.
Anything else?
I guess as far as my committee, I guess I was at the Veterans Officers Meeting, not whatever, get together there too. I do want to thank all those volunteers, the ones I spoke to seemed excited to work for Tom there and so I think Tom and Jenny are doing a good job over there.
They really are?
No.
Anything else?
Go for it.
Wow.